Thanks, and we're live here too. Good morning, everybody, and welcome to B County Commissioners Court. I'm calling this note, this special call meeting to order. Today is Monday, August 26th, 2024. The time is 9:06 a.m. We are physically located at the B County Courthouse, Commissioners' courtroom, number 110, 105 West Corpus Christi Street, Beale, Texas, 78102. That was the call to order. Would everybody please stand and join Commissioners' committee as a brief prayer?
Good morning, Father. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you so much for all your blessings. We ask you to come with us today to court to help us make all our decisions, do the best we can possibly to help one another. We thank you for the rain that we got and the thunder we're gonna get. We ask you to watch over us in all that we do here in this county. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now the Texas pledge. Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Thank you, thank you very much. Welcome, everybody. We're at agenda item number four, which is recognition of visitors. I know we do have some visitors in the audience today. Thank you for being here. Please don't hesitate to come on back. If you want to speak during public comment or if you're going to address Commissioners' Court during a particular agenda item, you do not need to do anything under Agenda Item Number Four. If you'd merely like to identify your name for our record at this point in time, you may do so. Otherwise, welcome. Thank you all for being here, and we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Five, Commissioners' Court Opening Remarks. I can never remember who goes first, but I'm thinking it's Commissioner LeVos.
Good morning, everyone. First of all, I'd like to start out with some recognition. I'd like to recognize our judge. Couple of weeks ago, I attended a city council meeting. It was challenged on how some of the cost structure is set up. And last week, I had an opportunity to judge. The judge attended the meeting to clarify all of these issues that were brought up at the city council meeting. So I just wanted to let everyone know that you are well represented in the presence of the council and issues that are occurring with the county and having good hard facts on how the county works. So Judge, thank you for representing us.
Thank you, Commissioner.
So thanks again. Some general information on the EOC bill, and things are progressing well. Last week, we had attended a bi-weekened meeting. Things are looking good, things are progressing well. A few little delays here and there, but nothing that's gonna be an immediate delay in the project. And last week, we completed the installation of the shower drains. We also did some more work on the non-EDA showers, not EDA showers, sorry. And then we also completed the installation of supply lines and valves in the showers. This week, we actually, I think going well. We had a little bit of a glitch last week, but we're gonna be starting out the new units, two and three, this coming Wednesday. And if all goes well by Friday, we'll have the rest of the units on the way. The take and float will begin this week. So things are moving along, things are going great. On Saturday, I attended an all-day EMT training session with Angel Pierre. Great session. Glad to see that he evented a major emergency that we can be well taken care of when people show up at the scene and they're gonna be extracted from their vehicles. So it's good enough to have all this training in place and a place to do. And getting back to just kind of work-wise, still waiting on a quotation, Judge, from the juvenile office on the floor. The second quote is what we look at and it's the way that information is going. Anything soon, we're gonna move forward with the first quarter. Hopefully, we'll hear something this week, say a quote. In Skidmore, received several calls concerning the high grass government and destructive people and where they're gonna have locations. It's amazing what a little rain does to weeds. They drove four times this past. Redwood grass doesn't have any of these things. Also, we had a little bit of an incident that occurred on Tex- dot highway with our main lighting south of Skidmore. There's a thing that's happening right now that's called copper death. And what these individuals are doing is asking them going in on these high-level telephone, uh, light poles and stealing the copper wires out of the poles. Well, we had a rule of 60 of those, practically, right? So Tex- dot asked me to inform the community if they're seeing strange activity going on with these lights, just to be notified and proper towards. It's happening not only here, it's happening in Houston, San Antonio. So it's a big rain. Apparently, what they're doing, Commissioners, is they gotta be smart enough to know that they're dealing with live power. They gotta be smart enough to know what to disconnect. So they do all the pre-work one day, and then the next day, they go in, grab a truck, grab onto the tables, and rip them out. And it's a pretty quick, so pretty quick. Uh, the JP's office was scheduled to start repairs hopefully in two to four weeks. We're waiting on the windows to come in. The other thing that was identified to me last week was the floors were starting to buckle in the JP's room. And it's a little bit concerning. I thought initially it was because of the rain up there, then it got on the floor and the crap. But we're thinking there's something to do with the humidity in the building. From what I understand, from the people that's been there quite a long time, when we had redwood windows, this wasn't an issue. But now that we have many splits in there, starting that before it's actually working. So they're gonna have to get, unfortunately, ripped out because the boys have got to walk that and then they can leave. My idea, we're gonna have to get some clothes to see what it's gonna cost to get them pissed out. So it's also creating a little bit of a trip ahead as well because of the mortgage going on. So also wanna contact the AC company that put many splits in to see if the adequate getting to the lighting and everything. The other part that we thought was mold-borne, it's really not. What it is, which whenever you put a lot of information woodwork, whenever you put orange or urethane on top of the floor, whenever it's wet, it'll get disfigured and move the surface. And that's what's starting to happen. It was like molds all over the floor, it's just not mold. It's that we're in the field and it's been being disfigured. So in Tynan, we, AP is continuing to report, get some lights up. So that's a positive note. Then I wanna thank Commissioner Ayas for referring a call to me that was seen, the call from St. Pat Electrical, that allegedly someone is stealing electricity. And in order to tie to their call, they caused what we thought was a county road, but it's actually a private road. So that was a pretty interesting conversation, Judge, as far as understanding the patents and laws on stealing electricity. So other than that, I'm actually doing my part.
Been busy two weeks. I had the opportunity to go to the Commissioners' Court Leadership, put on by V.G. Young. I graduated from that course in College Station. I got to spend a whole day at the Task Force One area disaster state that they have with the world of the country in College Station. And they, they, they train people from all over the world. There's over 117 different countries that send people there to train either fire departments, rescue, or law enforcement, or fast water rescue. It's an phenomenal facility, God, there he goes. It's something we should, we should all do. So I got a chance to spend the time there. I know Ryan hadn't been there, but man, it's a state of art. You'll see, I think that's where they train all the U.S. people, all of the Texas folks. Also, I had a Zoom meeting with a BDA, and that's concerning the upcoming contract that's coming in there. Also, we've got other, a couple of other people that are looking to get into the, on the airfield. So that, there's a lot happening out there at the BDA right now. And those are, those details, I'll bring Mr. Dominguez up here to kind of explain. I met with the Cosmo engineers to tour the courthouse last week. We spent two hours. Thank you to Jennifer Reyna, Debbie Moreno, Ani Chanisagire. We all spent about two hours going through room by room, identifying all the places around the windows and walls that are falling apart, the fore rooms. That was quite a, quite a tour. But we got some great plans from the, from the architect they sent back. They broke it down in real high priority, mid bar, and then just, just regular maintenance. They also stated that there's some additional $4 million that's available to every courthouse in Texas if they had it in the issue. So we can attack that, and we can go for that. He also stated that going down there, it's really key to send our maintenance people to learn how to maintain and keep the courthouse in, in store. Good, I'll bring it here. So like the windows, the walls, the AC, they looked at the air conditioning here and they said, the AC is, we're battling against air conditioning. It's not doing what it's supposed to. And they're not designed for old buildings, basically. So he had some tips and ideas for the AC. So we'll share those with the court as we get more details on that. But he was, he was a good help. And then they also got a grant writer, right, and they got a grant writer to test to them that helped us with similar grants and will charge. I went, that part, that's something, you know, so. We also had a preventative maintenance committee meeting, and I believe, Judge, you were attached an email to that? Or they're gonna send you an email just to see even what our update is going forward? And that is just starting. We had our first meeting. We're trying to get all of our buildings, all of our vehicles, everything, kind of. They're, they're just scattered. So we're just trying to get a better picture and get, get everything together to, to, so we can kind of tighten it up and know what we're spending and things like that. So we keep our buildings in, in proper shape. Talked to Mr. Mercer twice this morning. And on the courthouse generator, everything is complete there. They do have the transfer box in Corpus Christi. And we're gonna have a meeting at 11:00 a.m. on Thursday at the auditor's office and discuss when the power shutdown's gonna be to change over the power here at the courthouse. So we're gonna get a plan ready, and then it'll be done this Thursday at 11:00. Also, the doors, the gates that are going to the front of that, they're also completed. So we'll discuss that, that, that there too. We got a couple of bids for the water leak at the tax office. And I'm still waiting for one more. And then we'll, you know, we'll attack that window in the front. It's pouring all that water in the front of that building. Had a lot of calls on the high grass. County Road 420, Carr Road, Ellis Road. Folks, I was gonna tell you, be patient with them. I know Roden Bridge has four machines. They're, they're all up and running. Those guys are working really hard to get to everybody. And I know I saw it while I was riding around, a couple of the private citizens doing some of the roads. Just be careful. If you're doing your own or you're getting out there, make sure that, you know, no debris goes out there, or don't get hit or knock mailboxes down. Because I saw a few people doing their own. We appreciate that. But please bear with Roden Bridge to, to get to wherever we need to get. And with that, Judge, I bow to the Lord.
Thanks, sir. I'm gonna back around if I could, so I fuck it.
As much as you want. Come on.
First thing I wanna say, this is a Cuban cigar. And you're thinking, okay, what is Mr. DeWitt doing with a Cuban cigar? Only one, one of those. I had the honor of being at Tony Ferguson's Celebration of Life yesterday in Free River. His son presented me with this cigar. I did not know Tony was an aficionado of fine cigars. They had his, all his, I'm gonna call it equipment there, the boxes he kept his cigars in and everything. So this cigar is very, very special to me. So it is a Cuban cigar. He, he liked fine cigars. So it was, it was well attended. There were a lot of people there, a lot of good work was said. And I, if y'all would, I represented Commissioners' Court and told them how much we appreciate the work you did for the county.
Thank you.
So that was, that was it. As you know, I try to keep everybody up on wind and solar and what's going on. This is an interesting story, and I've told people to be careful when they're signing contracts for solar. It came my attention that, let's just say, a lady signed a contract for $80,000 worth of solar panels on her house. As part of the contract, they're gonna replace the roof on our house. Roof needed replaced. Heck of a deal. I'm gonna get a new roof. I'm gonna get $80,000 worth of solar. It's gonna save me money every month. I'm gonna come out ahead. Everything was great. Then the solar company came back after they got a bid on the roof. And they said, it's gonna cost you $130,000, not $80,000. Need to sign this new contract. Okay, she's, God, man, I don't really wanna do that. But she signed the contract. Got it all in, everything was fine. Got her new roof, got solar on there. First rain leaked. She called the roofing company. You know what? Since you got solar panels on it, we don't warranty it. So she called the solar, oh, no, you gotta talk to the roof. So now she's out $130,000 on the contract. I don't know how long the contract is for. And she's got a roof that leaks. The claim that she's upset is an understatement. So beware when you're dealing with these companies. They're gonna promise you the moon, and I'm not gonna call it bait and switch. That's true what it looks like. Okay, we're gonna put new solar panels on your house for $80,000, put your new roof on. Oh, wait a minute, it's $130,000. From what she understands, as soon as the roofing company found out it's gonna be the solar company doing it, they increase the price of the roof. They're gonna get in your pockets because they're gonna show you on paper how much money you're gonna make over the next 20 or 25 years. But you're gonna continue paying on our solar panels for probably 25 to 30 years. So be careful, be careful. Okay, I have a TCEQ story, Texas Commissioner's Department of Water. Sometime ago, several months ago, I was going down Fish Lane, and a new business had moved in on Fish Lane. And being in this business for a long time, when something doesn't look right, little hairs come up on the back of your neck. Man, something's not right. And you can't figure out what it is. Well, this new business, and if you haven't been down Fish Lane lately, you need to go down Fish Lane. These chemical toques that have the metal frame, and there's a plastic square inside that, were coming in. And they're piling up next to the fence. And they got them up high up on the fence, and you couldn't see over them to see what's going on inside the compound. And it looked literally like there were thousands of them, thousands. What's going on? Okay, new company moved in in November of '23. So I contacted our community fairs. I said, community fair, you need to go see what's going on. I didn't wanna go in as a commissioner. Community fairs went in and looked at it, and said, you know what? They're taking these toques in, they're cleaning them up, they're rebuilding them, they're refurbishing them, they're setting them back out. Everything looked pretty good. Being around this business for a long time, little hairs didn't go down on the back of my neck. Something's still not right. This doesn't seem right. Because more and more and more of these things are showing up in this compound. There probably, there's probably seven or eight acres, and literally, there's thousands of them. So working for the state as many years as I did, I, I had a few contacts left. And I called TCEQ, and I said, you know what? Here, here's a complaint I logged with TCEQ. Has concern about the number of chemical storage containers on the property and their contents. TCEQ did an investigation. They went on site. What they found, okay, toques come in, they're coming in from all over the area. They have all types of chemicals in them, toxic, non-toxic. Who knows what's in them? They're being washed out in this facility. This rinse aid, they call it, is going into a 4,000-gallon container. And it's full, but TCEQ's there. And they said, well, what's in the container? Well, we're not sure. What do you mean, you're not sure? Well, it comes in, we wash it out, we do this. This company also owns several other companies just like this around Texas. TCEQ checks, none of them are registered with the state of Texas. So TCEQ, those that have dealt with them, they are regulatory agency, but they, they not, not necessarily want to find you or imprison you. They want you to correct what you're doing that's incorrect. And they will give you a chance to do that. And they said, okay, company, here's what you're doing wrong. You need an environmental consultant, you need this. And by the way, where are y'all taking this, this liquid? We'll get into that later. Okay, so they say, okay, correct these things. We're gonna come back in about a month and see how you did. They came back and, and they really did a good job. I think it was one of those situations where we didn't really know we had to do all this. Sounded good anyway. And they've corrected what they're doing. They're now registered with TCEQ. They're, they're submitting reports like they're supposed to. And they've hired an environmental consultant. It's my understanding that Emergency Management and community fairs were in on the second investigation. So I'm hoping that sometime in the future, you guys can give us a briefing on what you saw and what you found. Because the potential was there, in my opinion, in my, my time with the state, my time with environmental issues, for a severe toxic mishap. Because where are these poisonous stuff? They thought, and I think the fire departments, their Viva Fire Departments, because they thought it was going into the city system, which it's not. There is a small septic system on that property for the, for the restroom there in the building. But TCEQ is on top of it. I know you guys know about it now, and, and everybody's all tuned in. They're having to make regular reports on what's coming in and what's, what's happening. Because what they're doing, and it's a legitimate business, over a period of time, these toques, this ultraviolet light creates a fracture in that plastic, and they have to replace the plastic in them. So they're, they're redoing them there. And, and my concern was, great, what are they doing with the old plastic? Where's it going? What are they doing with all this stuff? You get a chance, go by Fish Lane and take a look at that. If you go in north on Fish Lane, it's on the right. You can't miss it. But it's, it's cleaned up quite a bit. I know that after TCEQ went by the first time, there were like 15 vehicles there. Trucks, cars, pickups, and I'm sure they brought people in from everywhere to help. Okay, we need to get this cleaned up. So to my knowledge, it is operating like it's supposed to now. And anytime you see something that just doesn't look right, let your commissioner know. It may be perfectly legitimate, and everything is fine. But sometimes it has a potential, over a period of time, of creating a real hazard. So let's, let's be careful there. Judge, I think I'll leave it at that.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner, let. I do it. Same thing as Commissioner Ayas had mentioned. I got people calling about the mowing and stuff, and I found the same thing. They're busy and trying to get to the whole county, so just be patient. They will eventually get to you. We helped a couple ugly women there between the Dolan Apartments and Aldeza Pettus Garage. They had two enormous mesquite trees that had come down on their fence. And got all that taken care of and for them. Thank you to Robbie Guerrero and Victor Gomez for their efforts in helping me do this. Went to look at a disabled couple there in Tynan. And they had reached out to me several times, just never could get there about the roof. And so I went and looked at it for them, and it's, it was not able to be repaired at all. So some of you guys are just gonna have to get a new roof. And they were just hoping that there was something that could be done. Unfortunately, was not. Also, wanna thank Roden Bridge for the scraping of Lehman Drive and Salazar Heights, Benito Drive, and then the mowing and paving on Lehman. So had some constituents calm. We're very pleased that that was going along. Attended A2B UTV grand opening with a chamber of common ribbon cutting. It's a new business on the corner of West 59 and 351. They specialize in repair of small engines, lawn mowers, golf carts, ATVs, side-by-sides, all that type of stuff. And I believe they also sell ATVs, golf carts, things of that nature. So I wanna congratulate Matt and Amy of El Pe for their, their new business venture. Hopefully, they'll grow and continue on. I believe that they have another business of that nature. And Ford's Law, I believe, is doing well, so they want to also bring it to B County. Big thank you to Robbie Guerrero for his help this past Saturday. We were out from 8:00 to 5:00 taking care of another elderly woman. She had some mesquite trees that were overhanging the roadway as well as the roof of her house. Also, thank you to Johnny Keteris and Ramon Fuentes with AEP. We called those guys, because there were quite a few lamps that were overhanging the primary line from the pole to the house. And they came over with their bucket trucks and assisted us in taking all that stuff down. So that was, that was a big task, and we got all of that done. That's really about it. It was just a busy, busy weekend. There's more projects that are on the way, will be done, that will be addressed later. That'll pass, next, Judge. Thank you very much, Commissioners. Great updates, I appreciate it. That concludes Agenda Item Number Five. Agenda Item Number Six, public comment. Are there any members of the public who wish to address Commissioners' Court at this time? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, what with the Oath Program and the...
Can you, can you, I'm sorry, just for formality's sake, would you identify the ER?
Yes, my name is Sylvia Portes. I'm with the Oath Program here in, in Beale.
Welcome.
And I just needed to, I wanted to present the Commissioners' Court and for sponsoring us or supporting us throughout the years. We turned 25 this year here in B County. And I wanted to do a presentation with different families, you guys.
Sure, come on up. Why don't you all come on up to the lectern? Sorry, we could've done this as an agenda item, but...
It's okay. I'm, I'm gonna be on this side, because this podium is bigger, taller than I am. But I just wanted to, the Oath Program wanted to appreciate you guys for sponsoring us, for supporting us for the 25 years that we've been here. It's just, sorry.
No, thank you so much. It was so thoughtful of y'all. We really appreciate it.
It's also to help needy people. I thank the Lord for allowing us to help everyone here in B County and the surrounding counties. And we do just have a small token for all of you guys. It does say Medication Access Program, Open Architect for Hearts, the Oath Program. Our official name is Citizens Promoting Medical Excellence. And it's just a token just to say thank you to all of you guys for sponsoring us and supporting us throughout these 25 years.
Thank you so much. Hold on for just a second. For anybody that's in the audience or that's online that may not be aware of the Oath Program, and you correct me when I say something incorrect. The Oath Program provides assistance with, assistance for individuals in obtaining necessary prescription medications. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And it's available for anybody who chooses to apply?
Yes.
Are there qualifications that they can find on the internet or at your office?
Give us a call. Our phone number is listed on our Facebook page under the Oath Program. We don't have a website that we keep up with.
Do you know your telephone number off the top of your head?
Yes, 361-343-6621.
Great.
And we're only two, Ms. Beatrice Peña, myself, Sylvia Fuentes. She's been there a little bit longer than I have. So I've been there 24, she's been there the whole amount of time that we've been open. So anyway, we do assist any county anywhere in the United States. As long as your doctor is willing to sign paperwork, we can access the programs that are available through the drug companies so that someone can get free medications for up to a year. And there isn't a limited number of how many, if the person is on five. And it's basically name brand medications. Generics are available in all RHB, other pharmacies are lower costs. But like insulin and a diuretic medication, cycloprazol, inhalers, stuff like that. That's a name brand that your doctor wants to put you on, but you can't afford. That's what we do, we do all the paperwork. We do all the research for you, call you up, do all that. Most of the companies take about a month to process everything. But once you're in, you're in. And you're in for a year. And you get anywhere between three to four months worth of medications of whatever you applied for. There are some help for Medicare eligible people when they fall into the gap. Or someone that has regular insurance and can't access that medication because their insurance just carries generics. So that's basically what we do. We do help for eyeglasses and exams. And immediate, right now, we do have help from the Barnhart Foundation and the United Way that sponsors us, sponsors us to do immediate help. We help with utilities and immediate medication if someone's coming out of the ER and they need immediate help. But that's limited. We have very limited funding in that. I wish we had more because we're finding out that because of our economy, normal, everyday people working hard are also needing assistance to purchase medications. Because I think that's the last thing people tend to try and afford. You know, if the doctor prescribed you something and it's the last thing you go for if you do not have funding or monies to reach that, your medication. Especially if you start adding medications because your health is getting worse.
Gets expensive.
Yes, and so they end up, they end up leaving it aside and saying, well, I don't really need my medication. I'll get along, you know, for a little bit until they're really, really bad. And then they end up in the ER because they didn't purchase their medications. And that's what basically most people do only also by experience. Myself, I have heart issues, I'm diabetic, I have everything everybody else has, right? And I do know that, you know, I've been in that case because that's how I came to Oath. I was very low income and I needed medications and I couldn't even afford the generics. And it was one of the last things that I would, my kids were first, my household was first. And so then I would leave it. And we heard about Oath, Oath had just opened in July. And I came to them in December of 1999. And I've been with them since then and actually now the executive director. So I thank the Lord for that and I praise him for that.
Did it a success for you as well.
Yes, yes, sir. For giving us that opportunity, like I said, it's a privilege. So I just wanted to.
Why don't you come around and while you do that, thank you both, Ms. Fuentes and Miss Peña, for all of your efforts on behalf of our citizens, not only in B County, but in continental United States. And we are more than happy to continue to support y'all as we do every year. And what your mission is, is excellent. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
So nice to meet you. You wanna, or I'll hold it, you wanna stand up?
Yes, sir.
Come on up here. She'll get right in the middle and I'll just stand. You actually want to? They are told, it's a complaint I've had ever since I got here. Let's make sure we see.
Ready, one, two, three. Again. Oh, looks great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for all the work you've done. Yes, no, thank you. I hope your phones ring off the hook.
I hope, thank you.
Yeah, real quick, one more time, what was that telephone number?
Or you can email us at oathprogram@gmail.com.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you all. That was a nice surprise. And a very, very nice gift. Anybody want to follow that up? In all seriousness, we're still on agenda item number six, which is public comment. Are there any other members of the public who wish to address Commissioner's Court at this time? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to agenda item number seven. The following items are of administrative nature. Commissioner's Court has been furnished documentation on each item and all such items may be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a commissioner or county judge. I have a motion to approve in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Discuss and consider action on the following items. Agenda item number eight, approved request for new lights in the show barn from Quattro Shower, B County Junior Livestock and Homemaker Show, BCJ LHS Superintendent. Good morning, Mr. Shower, why don't you come on down and tell us what you got?
Morning, guys. Quattro Shower, like Judge said, B County Junior Livestock Show and Homemaker Show Superintendent. Last year, we replaced approximately half the lights in the show barn. This is a quote that we voted on as a board to go with. We replaced the other half, so it's 16 more lights and 16 adapters. And it comes out to $4,041.79. Do you have any questions for me?
Commissioner Duip pointed, well, let me let you lay down, I don't want to steal your thunder, go ahead.
If you would, you guys are tax exempt, this has a tax on it, y'all can have that taken off, that $308.83.
I'm sure, I mean, this was just a quote, I mean, we'll look into it.
Okay.
Yes, sir, thank you. This is also, I didn't mention, this is coming out of the show board's building fund budget, which we do with our lease agreement, have to spend so much a year. Just need y'all guys to approve.
And are y'all gonna put these up or?
Yes, sir, we have a person lined out.
Second, I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Thank you for bringing this to our attention. And thanks for everything you guys do for the youth and for excellent, very, very, great job. Appreciate you coming over there.
Thank you.
Thank you, shower. There's no further discussion, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Agenda item number nine, approved recommended proposal to update the office addresses of the tax office and IT department for 911 addressing and shipping mail purposes. I know we don't have Craig in this morning. So in your packet, you'll see an email that I received from Craig, our IT director. And basically, it's, the issue that he has is he is, his, the IT department is located within the tax office building. Because the tax office, the IT department does not have a separate suite or I guess it has to be a suite or a room number, its own individual USPS or 911 address. USPS is not going to deliver to his door. And that's just the way it is, that's the way it goes with the US Postal Service. I'm not too concerned about any of the other matters contained in his communication other than it is a valid request that he has. I've never been approached with creating a new address for the county. But like in the courthouse, we have actual mailing addresses in the various rooms. So if you mail the district clerk, your letter goes to the district clerk's office. At the tax office, it's just the tax office door. And so, you know, I do want Mr. Oliver to be present to provide additional information that he thinks is necessary for us. But I don't see any reason why we can't discuss this issue right now, even in his absence. Second, what are we?
New addresses.
Being able to apply for. Okay, so we'll get that sorted out.
Put suite numbers on the doors so that way he can come and talk to you that spot.
Sounds good, I've got a motion to approve in a second. Any further discussion? We'll figure out the details and if for any reason we have to bring it back to Commissioner's Court, we'll hopefully be able to do so by the next Commissioner's Court meeting. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Agenda item number 10, approved interlocal cooperation contract between the Department of Public Safety of the State of Texas and B County for the failure to appear program. This is a program that we've been involved in for many years. The contract came through earlier this year. Correct me if I'm wrong, Candy, but something that we've been doing for a long time. It came through, or it was supposed to come through at the beginning of the year. And I don't know that we ever. Yeah, so maybe I lost it in the junk folder. But anyway, we're bringing it to, this is something we continue to do. This is housekeeping.
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve in a second. Any further discussion? Judge, we're gonna put it on the calendar or something so we can catch up versus yearly here. No, I don't think it's, it's not yearly, right? Yeah, this is the first time it's been brought across. Now we're aware of it, it's in Candy's mind, Candy and Sharon's mind, so. Oh, Christina found it. So thank you, Auditor's Office. But, you know, and yes, it would always be ideal, kind of like with the maintenance that we're working on, the preventive maintenance committee, this would be good to handle all of these things. And I think we do have a spreadsheet.
Christina started one a few years back, now we're starting to run all contracts. And they would notify the court 60 days prior to them coming up so we could be ready or be online.
So I'm sure our Auditor's Office is on top of it. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Agenda item number 11, approved expo request for arena fee waiver from the B County Junior Livestock, I shouldn't say, BCJ LHS for their horse play days on Friday, September 27, October 25, and November 15, 2024.
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve in a second. Any further discussion? Love everything that the livestock show does for the youth in our community, keep it up, thank you. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Agenda. Excuse me, it's going so well. Agenda item number 12, approved expo request for auditorium fee waiver for the Conjunto Music Fest on September 13 and 14, 2024. Do we have anybody here for that? I was hoping.
We're up here.
Thank you, why don't you come up and just introduce yourself for us so we get you on the record.
We sent this here, Music Boys Entertainment, Monty with Choban Avivins, with Real Green Services, Joseph Chutnow with the Nautruckin, Adam Corrado with J.C. Cava Company. And basically, as y'all guys know, we used to have this yearly celebration, we've got the SSS again. And here since COVID, it's been obsolete. So we teamed up together, us four, and tried to bring that yearly celebration back to B County. And we have two day event, September 13th, September 14th, music, roping both days. We have a port home on the moon, the little cook off, IBC Saints cook off. We're working on a carnival, we'll confirm that today, we're trying to bring a carnival as well. Basically, we're just asking for help, I mean, this is our first year, we don't know what kind of revenue we can bring in. I know we have people in California, Houston, already booking hotels, it's affecting them. And basically, that's all we're here, is asking for help.
I'm so glad that you are here, thank you, sir. When is our next agenda, Commissioner? September 9. The only issue that we have is with respect, and y'all correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioners, correct me if I'm wrong, with respect to auditorium fee waivers, do we restrict 501(c)(3) or vote for tax exempt organizations? Usually?
That would be my question, are y'all a nonprofit or not a nonprofit?
No, right now, we're not a nonprofit, this is our first year, we're looking at doing a nonprofit next year.
Yes, good morning, Walter Rodriguez, promotional director of B County Expo Center. Good morning, Judge and Court. What I'd like to mention, as a whole, I'm one pretty excited promotional director, if you will. As you mentioned, we went through a rough few years. And what we've seen in the recent few months has been a great influx of events, community events that are open to the public, that the community is enjoying. There's some in the books and there's, that are already passed and there's some to come. So I am excited about these guys that invest in what they do out there. By the time these events come, there's a lot of monetary investment, there's a lot of effort behind it, coordination. And in this case, these guys are doing it blindside and not knowing what the turnout is going to be. So there's a gamble on their end as well. We just wanted to mention that, I appreciate what they're doing out there. I'm building a lot of new relationships that are filling spots that previously were not filled as much. You know, we're talking about, of course, the auditorium has always been wonderfully packed. You know, I have no trouble filling that. But when it comes to Pavilion Arena, the grounds, that's additional prospect revenue that we hadn't seen before. So I'm excited about that, I'd just like the Court to consider that.
Two things real quick. If we're gonna use Pavilion, I think we have the emergency management trailer parked under Pavilion, it'll need to be moved. And what is your recommendation?
My recommendation is that we consider doing some sort of wait fee for them.
What we would normally do if we waived the fee, we do charge the electrical.
Correct, there would be a maintenance fee that's associated with each area if you guys choose to implement that. Each area has its own fee associated. For example, the deposit would be paid on top of the maintenance fee. Now, the maintenance fee would be paid to cover the cost of preparation of the facility, the electrical use, and of course, the breakdown that the maintenance staff does do afterwards as well. In the auditorium, apparently have a $200 maintenance fee applied for that area. Arena would be 150, and then Pavilion is 100, and those numbers. And when we decided those numbers as a court, we considered the amount of electricity to choose and a lot of the preparation that goes in to each of the areas.
In light of all your recommendations and to kind of get things kicked off in B County, I'm gonna recommend the Court that we deprecate a little bit from our normal procedure and approve this with the maintenance fee and the electrical and damage fee. Let this go forward this year.
I'll say, the motion in a second. Commissioner Padias, can you give a point, say?
I mean, just publicize it all you can as far as, I know it's really hard to get a bend off the ground like this. And I commend you guys, I mean, this is a lot of work. So get it out there, publicize it as much as you can and see what you can attract from people. We appreciate the heads and beds, that adds to our tax basis. Thank you, thank you for trying or attempting to take this on again.
And to say again, we have a minimum that we charge anybody that we let them do, they don't charge, and that's basically what we're doing. Appreciate it.
Any further discussion? I'd just like to say two things. One, the questions aren't negative in any way. And we're all excited that you guys are willing to do this and I'm sure it will be a success. And I wish y'all a lot of luck in the future. And two, we would love to see that it is a success and that you keep coming back year after year. But I do understand that if you are gonna make the decision to be a nonprofit, go ahead and do it this year and get that set up, it's not that difficult because it does make it a little bit easier for us and we're not concerned about, you know, some of the other issues economic wise as it goes. Americans with all the other entities and individuals who approach us about waivers. But may good luck, if you guys want to come back, you hardly have. Our next Commissioner's Court meeting is on September 9. If you have any flyers or any additional information, by that time, please come back and you can speak during public comment and let the community know a little bit more about what's gonna happen that weekend. Good luck.
Thank you, Andrew, also, welcome you back after the event, you want to come back and give us an update?
Yeah, we'd love to hear.
Say, hey, we really would, thank you, it was a great success, we had just many people show up, we had, we had good. Come back and give us some details on what happened, okay?
Yeah, that'd be wonderful. Thank you, thank you for your presentation. If there's no further discussion, all the, hold on, have you heard the vote? You might say no. Have you heard the vote? I'm just kidding. There's no further discussion, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Good luck, gentlemen, thank you all for being here this morning. Agenda item number 13, approve and accept special warranty gift deed grantor being Marcia Franzen Kearns to grantee being B County donating lots 10, 11, and 12, and lot number 38 located in Pettis, Texas. Commissioner, with us, your agenda item, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, Judge, this is something that, you know, I've been working on for. Yes, Judge, this is something that, again, I've been working on for several months now. We were approached by an attorney in Santa Antonia and said, you know what? My client owns some lots in Pettis. She's paying taxes on them. She owns only one half interest in these lots. Would you all be interested in them? We said, sure. What are the stipulations? Well, if we give these lots to you and you do anything with these lots later on, she would like some kind of recognition, sign, whatever. Fast forward, and the judge did a lot of this work on his own. He really did with the paperwork and the back and forth with the attorney. It is to the point now that they are giving us those lots. They are directly behind the fire department and our community building in Pettis, so they are germane to what we're doing. We're going to... And I'll get into that in a minute. The other half of the lots, she only owns one half interest. I went by and looked at it. It hasn't been touched since the 20s. There's big trees on it. There's brush. It's just there. It's just a lot. And I want to recommend to the Court that we do go ahead and accept her half of these lots and at the same time, contact the people that own the other half of the lots, their relatives that live in Santa Antonia named Cersei, and see if they will also donate the lots to B County. Once we get to all the lots, it's about a half a block, a third of a block, really. We could clear it. We could put in a facility, parking, whatever, but it's real convenient to our property. We already own that property. I recommend to the Court that we do accept this and a letter copy go back to the attorney, and he can hold it on to his terms, accepting these lots. And also that we go ahead and contact Cersei's in Santa Antonia about their lots. Now, one thing that we have to remember, when I started looking, and this is actually the paperwork that was involved, this much paperwork for somebody to give you some half interest in a lot. What you find out is that, okay, back in the 20s, it was given to so-and-so. And they died, and they died, and this person, and this person. We have all these errors. They all have to do some type of quick plan deed or some type of deed or something, making sure the property is free, free and clear when we get it. And that would probably have to happen with Cersei's, and they may say, you know what? We want to sell it instead of letting you have it. This property was valued at a little over $4,000, her half was. So it's not that it's not worth anything. It is worth something. And I recommend, as part of my motion, we contact the Cersei's with a, you know, give it to us, take a tax write-off, and we'll work out something, and we'll go from there. We need to be sure it's ours, but this half interest in these lots is bona fide. It is a great, some wrong, Judge. It is. It looks like it's all legal, so it's going to be ours.
Got a lot of paperwork to it, so it must be legal.
We got a lot of paperwork. And it says copy on it, so that's a good thing.
Could I trouble you to please tighten up the motion a little bit? Because I think that was like a three or four minute motion, and I'm just thinking that's going to be hard.
The motion is to approve the acceptance of the property from Ms. Kearns in Pettis and to contact the Cersei's regarding their other half interest.
I have a motion and a second. Yeah, no, I appreciate it. Thank you. Any further discussion? Thanks for bird dogging this. It's a great opportunity and a great potential resource for B County. So this is really wonderful, and it was valuable to Ms. Kearns as well. She received some value out of the transaction as well. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Agenda item number 14, set public hearing date pursuant to Texas Transportation Code Chapter 253 entitled County Improvement of Subdivision Roads Vernon 2003. Consider placement of one no-through trucks, no turnaround sign, and 30 mile per hour speed limit sign from North Highway 181 to Hall Street in Toledo, Texas. Commissioner with this is your agenda item.
Judge, if you would, I'd like for the Court to table this till the next meeting. We have a correction on here, but I'd like to explain exactly what's going on.
Go ahead.
This is an interesting situation. We just did a no-through truck sign on the Cadril 308 off of 2824 of this north town. So folks, contact me on the H8HL Hall Street in Toledo. Hall Street runs parallel to 181. As you go past the post office, it's the first street on the left. They said, huge trucks are going down this street, and there's nothing down there. And I said, I don't understand. They said, well, we've got these big tractor traders. They're going down our street, and when you get to the end, it literally just stops at a capital. There's no turnaround. There's nothing. And they're having to drive out these people's field and their driveway to turn around. I said, well, why are they going down there? And she said she stopped one, and that's where their GPS is sending them. GPS is incorrect. She said, all you have to do, Commissioner DeWitt, is contact Google and get that corrected. I said, man, except we don't know what they're putting in their GPS. She said, oh, I didn't think of that. And she works for the county government in another county, so she's familiar with a lot of this stuff. So she said, it's on a regular basis. She said, something happens with GPS right there in Toledo, and they turn left and go down this street. And she said, it's a regular deal, and they're going real fast because they want to get to where they're going. And they get down there, and they're stopped. So that's why it's critical that we get this done, but there is a little bit of a correction we need to make, so I'm going to have to retable this.
So the motion is to table agenda item number 14 to September 9th.
That's correct.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Thank you for bringing this to our attention. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Agenda item number 15, approve funding request for county emergency communication tower for the formation pouring of concrete base and erection of tower tabled during the August 12th, 2024 regular term meeting. Commissioner Leibertus, this is your agenda item, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Judge, and I'd like to also thank the ARP Committee. I think we're making some great strides forward here to improve the entire county towards a communication tower that's going to support all these entities. So in discussion with the ARP Committee, we identified an opportunity here to leverage or appropriate the funds from the ARP Committee to support this project. So I want to thank the ARP Committee, Commissioner DeWitt, who's leading that, and Commissioner Lenny is also leading that effort as well. So Judge, after much discussion and several meetings, I'd like to make a motion that asks for the approval from the ARP Committee to fund up to $30,000 to Skidmore Fire Department for the building of a new communication tower for the concrete base and the erection tower. Commissioner DeWitt, would you like to add anything?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second.
You did, you did.
Any discussion? Thank you for speaking with it. I know that it's going to be great for Skidmore Fire Department, but it's also going to be good for B County. So thank you to the... Yeah, the schools. Yeah, communication is really important. Thank you to the ARP Committee for getting together and figuring out a way to get this funded quickly.
And thank you, Jennifer, for carrying all the work.
Doing all the work.
Yes, she did all the work.
We'll take all the credit.
All we had were ideas, and we get the credit.
That's right. We'll take all the credit. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Agenda item number 16, approve fiscal year 2025 sheriffs and constables fees report. Anything to present, Chief Deputy, or is this pretty housekeeping?
Yeah.
Oh, I have a motion and a second? Did I just call him? Okay. I have a motion and a second. I'm getting back on the same page as y'all. Any further discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Agenda item number 17, approve B County clerk's request for permission to use the B County credit card for lodging to attend the Regent A Fall Conference in Keansville on October 4th, 2024. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Agenda item number 18, approve amendment to professional services agreement between B County and I Docket for the district clerk's office. We do have Mrs. Silva here this morning. I'm sure she'd be more than happy to regale you with some of the struggles that she's had with I Docket. But if I can, I'll just jump ahead and say, the reason this is coming before us today is because we inadvertently left off one individual, one license that was requested. And so this cures that problem as our district clerk continues to go through the I Docket conversion and transfer and upgrade. Everything is working well, but it's taking a lot of effort and a lot of time of our district clerk. And so we're hopeful that we've got all the licenses that we need now with this addition going forward. It will be included in our budget as a district clerk budget. For purposes of this funding, Mrs. Kito, we're pulling it from available funds in the district judge's budget.
There will be license for the district, for the district, as the district judge requests. That will be coming from there, but as far as any maintenance going forward, that will be coming out of Form 9. But this money has been moved to Zenaida's software line to expend the users in your office.
Apparently, with it, it's a license, but it's so that way we won't have to pay any more upgrades to wherever the license is or just to keep everybody current. We're charging us any more fees for updating and keeping us updated with the OCA and the state mandated items that are going through every year, that changes every year. And, I mean, I tried to count as many district judges and the commissioners, and I really thought that maybe some of them were chair, but that's not going to happen. And so that's where we came a little bit higher.
So they're recurring every year? No, these are one-time license acquisitions, and then we'll have ongoing maintenance costs that that will be rolled into our budget in the future use. But it's not a meaningful number one or the other. But I did want to recognize Zenaida for sticking with it and getting what we hope is ultimately going to be the program that she and our districts and our county board of law need to operate effectively. So thank you.
When they tell you it's true, it can be true.
I have a motion to approve. I have a second. Do I have any further discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Agenda item 19, approve quotes for furnishing the newly constructed emergency operations center.
Do we approve a couple of questions?
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second, and then I'm going to turn it over to you, Judge.
Yes. Good morning, gentlemen. Jennifer Reyna, project administrator for the county. We are here at the furnishings for the new building, so it has been a long road. But in your packet, I have provided the quotes as well as a general breakdown of how the budget is. Do y'all have questions, Commissioner DeWitt, on this?
Couple of quick ones. I asked the sheriff's office to take, sheriff's department, to take a look at this and make sure that the meeting room would be, if they had to have a big meeting entered, that stuff would be...
Yeah, it was funny.
Everything was good? Great. The other thing, look at the details. I'm a detail person. I would recommend on the range that y'all put in the facility, you look at a double oven. Okay, if you've never had a range with a double oven, you haven't lived. It has a large one at the bottom and a smaller one at the top. And if you're just making a few things, use the smaller. Okay, and also look at magnetic induction on the top of it.
On that range?
Yes, ma'am. And if you're not familiar with magnetic induction, I recommend you Google it, check it out. It's been used in Europe for years and years and years. It's moving to the United States. It's extremely energy efficient. It doesn't get hot. If you would, it excites the molecules in the pot and gets them hot, and that's what makes the water boil. When you take the pot off, it's cool. It's safer. Take a look at it. Magnetic induction.
We'll take a look at a few other units. I do know that the unit that they have included on this quote has been specked out because it has to be, there's no work on where it's going to be put in.
Well, they're the same, exactly the same kind of range, except you get it with magnetic induction top.
Okay, so the connections are the same, so that's...
It should be exactly the same. It's just safer. You don't get the smoke. You don't get all that kind of stuff. And I'll be perfectly honest, we have a magnetic induction top plate in the house. I hardly ever use a regular stove before the electric top. Magnetic induction will heat and boil water exponentially faster. The only thing you have to watch is the type of cookware you use. It has to be compatible with magnetic, like a cast iron. You can't put a...
It's a copper rod that does something.
It won't work. And you'll know real quick that it's not going to work. It'll beep, beep, beep. But the cast iron works great.
And it comes with instructions.
But you guys, take a look at it. It's awesome.
Yeah. Mr. Ryan, there's nothing else that we're going to have to rip a wall, do anything that you're thinking about later on that we're going to have to care of to put in there?
So one thing I'd like for the Court to know is, we have, we started looking at a lot of this stuff from the start of the project, and we've played with different types of equipment to try to figure out what is going to work. So everything that we have asked for in these quotes is pretty much everything we're going to need. It'll put us, it'll put us in a position to not have to worry about stuff for any longer. And I think that is the most beneficial thing, is looking for the future, not having to replace stuff that may go out in four years. So hopefully, that's the case.
We're going to hold you to it now. It's on the record. But no, no, we don't, we don't, I wish I would have asked for this. I wish I would have asked for that. No, it's just, this is the time to... Just for the record, for a while, to me, means 10 years.
How long is that?
20 years, maybe a while's longer. Oh, I don't know. One year. I thought you had your hand up for a request.
I'll say again the question.
Sure.
I noticed that the city is saying, hey, man, we're going to help pay. Okay. Check in the mail?
Checks in the mail.
I did get a confirmation email from the finance director of the city, and I did make a copy of it to attach to...
I got it right here. That's where you have to ask.
Yes, for $48,166 is what they have in their budget. And that is, you know, of course, with Judge's wonderful presence and...
Oh, gosh, I have a question. They all agree about me. They just, they always wanted to support. They just had, they had some questions about it, was all. And as far as the number not quite being half, it had to do with the initial quote.
And the rest of my question is, if and when we get, whatever amount we get, do we get the ARP money back in the ARP pocket?
This is not ARP.
What's not?
This is, this is coming from the interest. So it's a little bit, it's a little...
Okay, I thought it was the remainder of our...
Different budget.
No.
Okay, okay. I take my question back.
General fund.
General fund.
Secret squirrel.
There's no secret squirrel funds.
And it's part of the general fund liability. And so I do have a transfer that you'll see coming from there and expensing the line out in Form 9 for, also for these expenditures.
I want to applaud emergency management. This is about as comprehensive as I've ever seen. It's down to thumbtacks. I mean, you've got about everything you can imagine in this thing, but you need every bit of it. And you have an opportunity, and this Court has an opportunity to do it right the first time. And I applaud you guys for the detail that you've done on this. I really do.
There's going to drop down screen or anything, right?
No, but there's some...
That comes out of the floor.
There's some decent sized TVs in here that they are needed.
There's six massage chairs. Those ones, yeah, all. Ryan, does this quote, or Jen, does this quote furnish all the offices?
So I have a couple of copies of this, but I just wanted to show y'all when we talked about all encompassing. I went through line by line with what was provided, and this quote was provided by Tessa Office Solutions. She did a wonderful job of rendering each dimension into what she had for our specs. So this is a visual of where all of those pieces on the quote are going to go. So I do have that for you guys, but I feel like she did a wonderful job.
And to understand, they're going to sell all of it and all of the debris.
Yes, yes.
Which is big.
It's big. And for that quota amount, it's amazing because they're anticipating roughly two weeks of work to do all of that, in and outplace all of the equipment where it needs to go, and make sure that it's in working order before they need.
Do we still anticipate October-ish?
Yes. Mid-October is the last quote that I have. You know, pending anything holding back, but I don't see anything at this moment.
So maybe we move in first of November or so?
Just still waiting on the generator, whatever, they get this delivered.
Yes.
Oh, the generator.
While we're talking about that, where is this parking lot going to go that we approved, the concrete parking lot? Around the back side. So it'll connect the, where the awning is on the, what is that, north side? Okay. And come around to behind the maintenance of the port of the building. There'll be a little section there as well.
I do have visual renderings of that in my office if you'd like to see them.
Okay, I'm just curious.
Yes.
I drive by, just to see how it's going, and trying to envision the public, trying to figure out where to go. trying to figure out where to go.
Yes.
Where do I park and all kinds of.
We do have a little bit of a plan on that as well. That is something, yes, that is something that we spoke about heavily because that is, the intent is to still have it for the public.
Well, because you still got the folks in the community affairs, I need my septuaries, I need my electricities, so you're gonna have 15 or 20 people a day going out there to get their permit.
Yes, and we're intending that to start from the expo entrance to the entire parking lot, and then as you get closer to the expo, routing it to the proper entrance to the parking lot.
Get some signage up and stuff.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Good job.
Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Jen. Thank you, April. Moving on to agenda item number 20, Hurricane Harvey, Texas General Land Office, GLO, Community Development Block Grant, CDU-G. Status of project update. Gentlemen, any good to report?
Not since, we got the last update, correct?
Still, last update is that we are waiting on GLO. Everything that we had turned in is accepted, so it's another waiting.
Okay, so this is the date that we were sitting here. Last year?
Seven years ago during Harvey.
Oh, seven years ago.
Seven years ago.
Yeah.
No power for most of the people, but today's the day.
Wow.
Him and the night.
Yes.
Pretty awesome.
So the base of government is pretty awesome.
Yeah, we look how long it took to finish the fire department over there.
No, I know.
Seven years.
Finally got that done, though?
Yes.
All right. No action on agenda item number 20. Agenda item number 21, American Rescue Plan ARP. Status of projects. Gentlemen, anything to report?
We've just had a conference here, and our money's tied up, and everything's going well.
Excellent. It's amazing. We've been able to draw this money out, use it in so many diverse ways for the benefit of the county, so thank you guys again for all your efforts in that regard. No action on agenda item number 21, executive session. We have no executive session items today, so we move on to agenda item number 20 to adjourn.